Meeting call, Lord. Ms. Davis, can we have our roll call?
Dr. Robson. Mr. West.
Here.
Dr. Bunch.
Here.
Mrs. Swear.
Here.
Mr. James.
Here. We all here except for Dr. Robson in his hand. Can you have adoption of the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. It has been moved by Dr. Bunch, second by Mr. West. May I roll call?
Dr. Robson. Mr. West. Dr. Bunch. Mrs. Swear.
Aye.
Mr. James.
Aye, it passes four zero. Okay. Public comment, do we have any?
No.
All right. Recognition and presentation, recognition of summer workers.
Mr. James, the members of the board. I admitted to you earlier on that we wanted to recognize the summer workers because I think this summer, and I think each of you will agree, we probably worked harder this summer than we've ever worked before. Y'all agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For the most part, I tried to visit schools at least twice a day. You know, they got down, me down pat in the morning time, so I was trying to switch it up, trying to go about noon time, go back in afternoon, you know? Because they knew I'm coming early in the morning. But, but these, all of the members of the custodian staff, they have worked very hard. We did something a little bit different, not altogether different, but we started one school at a time. And we did that because of the fact that we knew that coming around crunch time for the opening of the school, there was gonna be a lot of work to be done. Some of these are young ladies and young men. They worked on Friday, you know, that was our day we had off. They worked on Saturday. And somebody even after the work a couple of times. You know, I won't say who asked them to do that, but they volunteered to do that. But, and I guess after law would have it, then this board decided that we were going to go in and try to do something for the custodian staff. And all of you got a cross the board raise. At a time when money is very, very tight. But this board, they kept pushing, they kept pushing, they kept pushing, kept praying that we were able to work something out where by each of you could get a raise. And it wasn't, you know, a fifty cent raise, you know? It was a pretty good, it was a substantial raise. So, because of the fact that now that you worked hard this summer, we hope that the raise is gonna serve to motivate you to work even a little bit harder. As you know, we should have a school finished perhaps in October. And, yeah. I have a thing about appearance. Oh, you know that by now. So, we finished this school, we're going to the new school. We got to work twice hard to do what?
Keep it up.
Thank you, Lord, keep it up, right? But, they were very hard this summer. They were very cooperative in the process of working, they could kill the equipment over summer. So, I just thought it would be fitting because that we were bringing them in to let you see them face to face and also to present them with their certificate. Because if you have not ever, you know, if you have never been to high school, first, there's two things you stay on good terms with. The cafeteria folks and custodians. They know what you do. That's principle. Because they talk to everybody, because they formed a relationship with everybody, even the kids. So, if you don't, if you're not in good standing with your custodian, you probably have to last longer in prison.
Free to set it to KI, right?
KI called me every morning, seven, at six thirty, seven o'clock, Mr. Butcher. This is what we're gonna try to do today.
I know he's got a lot of energy.
He does, and he works very hard, and he can motivate other folks to work, and that's a good thing.
Okay?
Mr. Fields, you let me out, please?
Yes, sir. Y'all's the one that wanted me to let you know that you came over about three times. All right, I'll call you now, you come forward and get a nice picture with Mr. Butcher, which is your student. Let my entire department, I don't know.
You sure you got enough?
I think so, maybe.
I'm telling you, it's the fuck.
We loud and proud.
That's right. I know he's not in, but little, little Ice Car Brad. You sure he gets it? Christie Franklin. Eric KI Dumb.
Great lesson, and I really appreciate you getting everything organized from the start of the summer. But, one started night to another, that's how we go.
Did y'all know KI was a famous baseball player? Oh, he told y'all?
Stanton and Franklin.
Ms. Franklin is a lady of very few words, but she worked very hard. Very few words. Congratulations, and we really appreciate your hard work, okay?
John Davis.
Mr. Davis, he is, he is, he don't do a lot of stuff. We appreciate you, Seth. Look at the camera right there, so you know. They're gonna send a note to you later, it's like. It's big, gotta get your backup camera there.
Craig Hutt. I know who he is, you're court man, who that pro? Abigail Smith.
The French in town, I had with this Abigail, we went over to the school one day to cut the heads. I said, "Abigail, I want you to come here and do all, direct up behind me." I guess about thirty minutes, she said, "Mr. Butcher's hot out here." I said, "Abigail, you go over there, I got it." Thank you, Abigail.
You cut the heads.
Well, that was a cutting heads in Abigail?
Yes, sir.
Now, you go over there, you get ahead with me.
Blue overalls and crispy, creased white shirt. Tabby the Rye.
Ms. Wright, we appreciate you so very much, you. Ms. Wright never complains, she's gonna try to get a job.
Is she a rye? Carmichael Day.
Mr. Day had one of the hottest jobs because they was painting all the yellow lines, you know, on the asphalt, and you know that was a hot job. So, one day I passed, he was on his knees with a piece of cardboard. I said, "We don't have, you know, meat pads though, sir." So, we made sure we didn't get some meat pads within next hour, right? You go put the camera there. You ain't, you're not shocking me. Thank you, Seth, we appreciate you.
Walter Clark.
Mr. Clark had to look for him half the time, he don't have that water. Thank you, Seth.
Ronnie White.
Fine, White, how you doing? We appreciate you, Seth. Get that little camera there?
I didn't want to lose it.
I don't believe he's here with Carlos Chapman. Marita Baber.
Then I take anything from everybody else. I don't care how many things I have to be able to do. You know, say that's what he do. So, she's really an asset to the district. And she does a very good job, we motivate other folks, and she can tell us, but we appreciate you.
Bimol. Robert Campbell Jr., y'all a P.
This camera was staring at Sunday, never say a word. But then I went out there, just on the park, and they got a new truck you had to pay for.
He said, "You never say the word, you ain't, you ain't related to Boobie, you know?"
He said, "I told Mr. White, boo." He moved so hard, they be moving over there. We appreciate you, Seth.
Willie Wright. Fred.
I always thought Mr. Wright was from New Orleans, we didn't kind of like having New Orleans accent. But we're gonna be playing with Mr. Wright, but he's gotta have a new series coming up pretty soon. And we're gonna, he gonna really be a member of that National School, because he's another person, he's always moving and going all the time now. When I was cutting the heads, Mr. Wright didn't walk out on me. Thank you, Seth.
Dill O' Perry.
Mr. Perry was an asset to us this summer, but he's also an asset to us in the dining hall. He's always working very hard. So, we appreciate you, Seth.
Thank you. Aretha Stewart.
Ms. Stewart, we appreciate all of your hard work and service, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, you take the speech off, you go ahead here.
Remember, next summer, you gonna give that sun hat, now.
Barbara Hoskin. Sharon Bernard.
No, I know you don't. Sharon Bernard, why those folks who work on Saturday and Sunday too? Look at, look at the camera there. Yes, ma'am, you know that's a good one, you dress up here, Seth.
David Morrison.
School started with rains, we had, they had just released four players, so I called Mr. Morrison about six o'clock. And Mr. Morrison, we really get to go over here and help. I said, "What, yeah?" And he came right on. She thought we doing this morning.
Christina Hawken.
Hawken, how you doing? All right, we appreciate you and all of your hard work. Thank you.
Christopher Sewell.
Rappin'.
We appreciate you, man.
Chris DJ Hawk Fullton. Craig. Craig Punt.
Craig got ten jobs.
That's your name? We appreciate you, Mr. Wood. We know you spend all the time on the stripper in the interview.
All the way from East Over Street, Cleveland Moore.
Is that the same person that you come to us all the time?
That's him, he never got all kinds of jobs.
Got all kinds of jobs, he ain't had no stripper's job, does he?
With Mr. Moore, basically, we got into a tight, we had to get, trying to move out of those rooms. Mr. Moore was, he said, "Mr. Butcher, I'll do whatever we need to do." And he, you know, with a crew of his own doing just that. So, I really appreciate him because he took off his showy tie, and put on his work clothes, and kept us out a whole lot.
Mr. Moore, I mean, filing open up at five thirty.
Appreciate you, Seth. Again, we appreciate each and every one of you. And we hope that a little raise that you receive this year that you may do something for your family members and all.
Mr. Noble and Mr. Hill.
Mr. Noble, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Speak up, now you in the Baptist church, we don't call you robe, we don't call you name, you say Mark, you gotta let us know.
So, I still get your picture of Mr. Butcher, Mr. Noble, y'all get Mr. Noble?
I apologize to the two folks that we might have missed, that's my error, okay? I'll take the full responsibility. Mr. Noble? Mr. Hill, how you doing?
All right, Mr. Hill.
Let me see, I apologize to you.
Let me tell y'all something about the regging now. It's Mr. Brian here. Mr. West. When Mr. West first came, he said, "Man, we got to pay these people all month." I mean, for years, how many years?
Just my seven years. I ran way out, they been asking for it.
Keep pushing, keep working.
Mr. West said, "I want to pay him with more than the county paid their people."
Keep pushing, keep praying.
But Mr. West, I'm telling you, he fought.
All right, now, that's a dollar piece.
All right, but check it out. We are here, and we work, and we're responsible for all of you, guess how much we get a month? Two hundred dollars.
You don't believe it, fifty dollars a week. That's not even a minimum wage.
That's all we get, baby.
But we appreciate you.
I can speak for everybody.
But the state law won't allow any school board member to be paid more than two hundred dollars a month in the state of Mississippi.
But you know what, our living is not a thing.
Listen, our students, we know, student, whatever students achieve, it's because classrooms are clean, teachers can't teach. You're integral to everything we do in athletics. So, please continue, and know that we're all together on the same mission. Because I know, I've been a teacher, and it makes a difference if things aren't organized and clean for teachers and for students. Thank y'all.
In other words, we're saying, we recognize that every job is important, and every person is important. That's the way we operate.
Remember, for total appreciation, we can work coming up.
Hey, let's see you on the reservation.
With Jaguar Nation and Bane Brothers.
Thank y'all.
We have the nickel. They in here. You know where you are. He gonna be bringing a friend. He know what we are about. He gonna be bringing friends.
Yes, sir.
Our second presentation for the evening is for National Early College. And seemingly, you know, when there was something positive at National Early College, I always write in the middle of it. When Ms. Jackson first, when Ms. McDonald first approached me, Jackson, about being the principal at National Early College, she really kind of turned it down the first couple of times. So, you know me, I just kept prodding along, and kept prodding along. It was amazing what she said, she says, "Well, Mr. Butcher, maybe you see something you mean that I don't see in me." I said, "That's what our job is, to make sure we find people, put them in the right places, because it's very important you match people up with their skillset." And sometimes a skillset is an instinct, then you might not even know your skillset, but somebody else could identify the skillset, or you could identify the skillset. But seemingly, whenever early college is in competition, or when there's a job to be done, early college is always right there. And we can contribute it to a lot of things. First of all, we contribute to your leader, who's your principal over there, to each of the teachers, and most of all, you have better career support than anybody else in the district. If we can find some way to nurture and just support throughout the district, every school in the district will be just like National Early College. So, I know that all of you work hard, and, you know, we're not, we're not crazy. All of you work hard, there gonna be times you have disagreements. But, Mr. West and I are the front example. No organization's gonna move and go anywhere if everybody's thinking along the same level. If everybody want the same thing, it's just not gonna happen like that. So, we want to say congratulations to National Early College staff, students, and their parents for a job well done. And we want to take this opportunity to challenge the staff, the principal, and the students and parents to continue to hold the candle very high for National Early College. When I came into the meeting this afternoon, Mr. James and Mr. Butcher tonight, that's what they asked, I said, "Okay." I won't tell you why. But, you know, National Early College is the envy of some of the other schools here in the Kansas City. So, everyone, how can a student in National Early College? It's easy. Start at least in eighth grade, and get to the ninth grade, fill out an application, whatever. Go through the interview process, and you can be in National Early College, if you. But, but the process entails that, first of all, we have to make sure that we take care of the students who's presently enrolled. And if there's anything that's, any additional slots that we don't take, define, we'll take students anywhere. That's just the way it goes. But, again, to each of you as staff members, we appreciate you from the bottom of our hearts. And I know that when parents decide to send their children, and parents and students decide to go to college somewhere, and they can go and start off, they can go to Southern, let me get the shit together. They can go to Southern and start off by being a junior, instead of a freshman. As a parent, you know, you're talking about ten or twelve thousand dollars, you might chill out. And on the reverse side of that, that means still that child had to wait four years to get out and get a job. Two years, you could say, "Hey, I'm gonna pay insurance for six months." And after this, unless you get sick or downside, you on your own. And that's a good feeling, when you can tell a child that. Mr. Fields, you let me out, please?
Yes, sir. The National Early College was voted the best public school in the Misslou, so we would like to recognize them. Professor Heather Jackson.
Ms. Jackson's out today.
Mr. Briggs. Help me out, Mr. Briggs. He matched, Briggs.
Mr. Briggs is a precious staff member, we need to swipe him up from another district. Military back wearing it all, you know, so. Mr. James, relate to you, you in that economy, he doing that. Who is he just gonna break here till we get a group picture, okay?
Yeah, we gotta stay.
You can stay right here, we'll get a group picture, we're back.
Erica Brown Tanner. Chris Fulton with his second award today. Tanika Green.
We appreciate you, Ms. Green.
Yes, sir.
Morgan Grover. How?
Alden.
Sandy?
Alden.
Hoben, we'll add that later.
Yes, sir, I just got me a test one.
Well, congratulations to you. I can do with Groove.
That's what the kids say. Thank you.
Deidrona Jackson. Lacey James.
Congratulations, we appreciate you.
Tameka Lit. Erica Rankin. Janie Reine. Ryan. Ryan, just playing.
Ms. Ryan's also in addition to the Early College. We originally had her in what, with one assignment? And we had to make some adjustments, she was just eager to go out to the Early College. Thank you.
Juan Smith. Janae Sullivan.
Janae Sullivan takes care of the secondary duties, the kindergarten duties, and their county duties. And she always have, she had what I call the Chick-fil-A customer service skills. We're gonna try and contrast with this Janice, so to do some customer service skills kind of thing. We're going to try and contrast with this, so to do some customer service skills kind of thing.
Leonard Williams.
Mr. Williams, our math teacher there. You got one group picture?
I didn't know I could do that.
Do what Mr. Fields get excited, so he can get a good direction.
Okay, everybody was looking.
Thank you all so much.
Good afternoon, the Mr. James and the school board, and the Mr. Butcher, and the deputy superintendent, and the director. I'm Angela James, the president of National Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta's Board to end.
Hello, we're not inside the door.
I just wanted to come, uh, National Alumni Chapter is a nonprofit organization founded on Christian principles where we strive to make a difference in the lives of the children and the people that live in this community. So, I wanted to come report to the board today just to thank you, and a special thank you to Mr. Butcher and Ms. McDonald for the special efforts that they have made in helping National Alumni Chapter utilize some of the buildings that you have for meeting spaces with our youth. National Alumni Chapter gave over sixteen thousand dollars in scholarships to National Adams School District children this past year. So, this year, we ended up not really having a place to meet, but as, on Saturday, this past Saturday, we had a line of parents and students out of the door trying to find their children up for the youth initiatives that Delta Sigma Theta offers to this community. We have the Delta Academy, Delta Gems, Delta Embodied, and right now, we're on a seed grant where we're going to use the students of National Adams School District in order to spend that money on them with different skills. Our Delta Academy program is from sixth grade to ninth grade. Delta Gems is from ninth to twelve. Our Embodied program, it mentors the young men and boys from sixth grade to twelfth grade. And our seed grant is something that's different and new that we have incorporated this year. So, I do want to say thank you to Mr. James, the school board, the deputy superintendent, and Mr. Butcher for allowing National Alumni Chapter to utilize your facilities. The seed grant that we have, we're going to develop, we're going to help students in the National Adams School District develop resumes, they can develop personal resumes. We're doing interview techniques skills with those children. We're also providing clothing for those children that they would be able to utilize to actually go out and get, go on job interviews to learn what, how you need to dress, and dress inappropriate when you go out there. So, on behalf of National Alumni Chapter, I wanted to say thank you to the board for allowing us to utilize, I think it's the Unboxman Freshman Academy Building, and I look forward to many more endeavors with National Adams School District. Thank you.
Mr. James, you don't give them the protocol, Mr. Todd.
Well, I'm apologetic. Thank you.
Five point three would be.
Uncle, you up?
Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see y'all. Uh, today, we're going, the gym says to go over the ESSR, kind of where we stand with ESSR work right now. So, I'm going to go through that. I'm going to start off kind of where we are financially with this. You can see a very quick picture of it. I'm going to show you what the jobs are, and then progress. We've got some stuff in Morgantown and McLaurin that I've already got sixty percent drawings on. That, so I can kind of go through some of that with you. And then, I think Mr. Butcher just wanted me to briefly go through some pictures of the project. I'm happy to do that. I've got those if you'd like. If you don't mind, I'm going to kind of do it from here so I can kind of control it. Okay, so, as far as our overall project budget, y'all have seen this before. Still see behind me? This is the new high school one. Sensitive bouncing around. We're running right now at about twenty-three point four million dollars on it, so we're doing pretty well with that one as far as the budget wise is. We still have some contingency remaining in the project. We are working through furniture purchases already. This is an actual number that we've got of four hundred eighty-six, three twenty-four. Uh, so, I'm feeling good money wise as to where we are with the high school. I'll move down to the middle school. The middle school is obviously the one that we have the ESSR monies that are mixed in with the construction costs. So, uh, we've had change orders and stuff on that job, about two million dollars worth of them. There's a variety of different things. A lot of those things are going into towards ESSR, what have you. Uh, and then, show you the original contingency. But right now, we're running at about eleven point two million dollars, and that was a nine million dollar budget. The balance of it was to be covered by ESSR. So, what I have here so far is, what you see on the screen here, it are the ESSR items that we denoted very early on on this to be able to balance this out. We needed about four million dollars worth of ESSR cost being, coming back and being reimbursed. So, I'm going to get off of this one, and I'll show you where we are to date on that. So, this spreadsheet here is something that I keep with Ms. Thomas. So, the way the ESSR work has been going on with Paul Jackson, who's the contractor of the middle school, is that every month, really starting in about December, they have been submitting to us a PDF that is full of all of their invoices, I mean, receipts and stuff. So, it's not just their general pay application, very general, "Hey, you owe me a hundred fifty thousand dollars." It's got all the material stuff broken down. It's got their labor broken down. It's got their overhead broken down, or a variety of things. So, as you... I did nothing.
Go to your screen here. Go to zone, go to zone. Go back to zone.
Share screen again. Okay, so, what, if you look at the, at the left-hand side, you see Paul Jackson labor, Labor Bird, fuel. These are all the different types of expenses. So, you've got your storage containers, your dumpsters, your power, because there's a portion of all of those things that are allocated to ESSR because they're needed for ESSR. But we go all the way down to concrete work, masonry work. We've had masonry work in the bathrooms. We've been redoing bathrooms, what have you there. Uh, there's some roofing work that's been involved with that. There's glass work. That's all your panels and stuff that are going on outside the building. Uh, so, there's labor and materials from glass builders, metro mechanical, all the HVAC work, shivers electric, all of the electrical work and stuff that needs for that, along with all the overheads. So, you can see the listing of how many things we've got. Every month, I break it down for Ms. Thomas, and I try to give her a little explanation which each one is. So, it's been good. She, we have to submit that in by the twelfth of the month, and then she submits it in for payment. I do know that everything up through May has been paid. I'm not sure if June has been. So, when we met with Mr. Butcher and Mr. Bird and Ms. Thomas probably about three weeks ago, at that point, everything up to May have been paid, to the penny, for what had been submitted.
Let me ask you a question. Has anything Mr. Peter does for this particular project for payment that's been declined?
Nothing, yes, sir. Every single employee. So, when I come down here and total them up, these lines right here is the total for each month. Okay, so, uh, and then, this is the total if you total them all up. So, if I go around and I show you each month, we have a total. And I mean, some of these months get fairly expensive, seven hundred thousand dollars one month. We had one month that was nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I mean, we're close to a million that month. This is the last one that we submitted. This is July's cost, and this is June. We have not been paid these two. I, Mr. Bird may come in and tell me we've been paid this one in the meantime, but I, he hasn't told me that yet. So, big picture, what we're trying to get to here for your, really what you're looking at is this number right here. Three million, nine hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars. That's the total that has been submitted by Paul Jackson. If you remember, I said we needed to be about four million dollars in order to, you know, break even, or at least, you know, have some money in there. We are at that point. What that does not include is the six percent fee that the architect gets on that, so we will be submitting that as well. So, what Ms. Thomas is now doing is because we are pretty much right at the threshold of amount of money that we had allocated in there from ESSR, is she's looking into whether, you know, we can reallocate some other funds into it, or can we increase that some. So, uh, but I can tell you that, you know, Mr. Butcher and Mr. Bird and I were sweating in there for a little while because the invoices were a little slow coming in, and we were sitting at about a million something, and we didn't need to be at four. And then, over the course of May and June and July, it really just shot up. I sweat every time this switch talks to me, so. No, I was. I mean, we, and we were on the contract. It needed to submit, needed to submit, because there's also all the little costs, you know, the overhead, those kind of things that kind of get lost in the mix. We got to, we got to, uh, we got to show those things are reconciled, so, and they've been doing a good job of that, so. That's, so that's giving you a big picture money wise. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I want to ask, with the ESSR funds and the ESSR requests we've made, are you, the resources coupled with the nine million dollar bond issue, how do we stand generally speaking in that perspective with the bond?
So, at the bottom of the overall program sheet that I showed you, and I'm sorry, Excel has all this stuff at the top, so it's hard to see the whole thing. These are the things that we wanted back from ESSR, of which we have recovered at the... Okay, so, what you have here is if you add up all the stuff up there, it's thirty-five million dollars worth of cost. You needed to be about thirty-three billion between the nine million and the twenty-five million for the two projects, okay? Uh, and then fee, but then you take that ESSR amount and you put it in here to subtract it out, you're down at thirty-two million, and the program budget was thirty-four. So, we're in pretty good shape right now. Now, what I don't have on here is a couple of lingering, some change things that have come up in the last couple of weeks. I've got to get with Keith to kind of reconcile that, but I'm telling you, it's not a million dollar deal stuff. So, uh, the ESSR portion...
So, you're projecting that we will be within budget?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the ESSR is going to be a huge part of that.
Keeping us within budget.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, any other questions on that? All right, let me show you now. So, this is the ESSR that's going on in middle school. We've been talking about this for quite some time. Now, what you have is you have the ESSR other projects that are at Morgantown, McLaurin, and West. So... Okay, what you see here, let me make this a little bit bigger. Okay, so, this is the monies that we have in there. I don't know what this ESSR is going to do. Okay, this is the monies here that we have for each one of those schools. There is the architects for each. You have Dale Bailey Partnership is Morgantown and McLaurin, and Salmon is West. Uh, and those are the budgets that we have for each. So, basically, what I had is I had eleven million dollars in there for HVAC. And what I did was, very democratically, I guess, divided it by three, and allotted a portion for each. Same thing with windows, same thing with restroom. It's something that we can play with a little bit with the numbers if we need a little more money in one and a little less in the other, as we're getting the options from the architects. Dale Bailey controls the bulk of it because they got two of the schools. So, what HVAC wise, for the amount of money they got there, they feel that they can replace all the HVAC units at both schools, and that is where they are moving towards. Now, what I have is an estimate from the mechanical engineer. I don't have that as what it is from a mechanical contractor. So, it's the drawings are a little bit more. I'm going to have to get a mechanical contractor to take a look at it and see, make sure we're at this. He was actually below budget. I'm just going to hit decline on that.
Accepted.
Accepted, okay. On windows, with Mr. Butcher and I talking about Morgantown, McLaurin, we may not have to do a lot of window work because they've got that kind of, it's that strong plastic that has kind of a frosted finish to it.
And really true, I think what's up there now, it's been there a while. It's got very little wear on it. I don't think we can buy anything that's going to be that good. But these numbers we're talking about with McLaurin and Morgantown, a little bit of, and they're rejected.
That's a budget.
Budget estimate.
That's the money that's been allocated. So, when Ms. Thomas went in and submitted in projects and stuff for ESSR, she has a spreadsheet. That's how those numbers came off of that spreadsheet. And all I did was divide it by three to give, allocate a portion to each project.
That's the same, that's the same money that you, we talked to you about allocating floor, allocating floor for AC for those two. Right, but I'm saying, so, 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 we have big proposals out for this?
No, no, sir.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm talking about.
No, sir. What I've got right now are, are, we have drawings, are working on drawings right now. They submitted to me in the last couple of days, Dale Bailey, a what I call a sixty percent set of drawings. We need to review, take a look at, make sure it's kind of going in the right direction. And so, I've got to sit down. I told Paul Purser with them that I was going to meet with y'all, explain this, and then I want to, then I want to sit down with him and just kind of go through wherever there are some people going on. And then, I'm anticipating if we could, if he's good and we're good with everything and everything lines up money wise, because that's the big thing I got to look at. Where you currently are, where are we with the budget? If everything's good, then I anticipate in the next month or two, we should have something prepared that we can come in and have a request for bid, or a request for advertisement for those.
For the eight, eight, eight.
For those two schools, yes.
You say November comes?
That's what I'm shooting for. I mean, if everything looks good now, we should. Good busy month. So, any questions on that? So, what we have so far in place, and I mean, I'm not going to bore you with the drawings of it, but, uh, I have estimates, I have, uh, from the mechanical engineer for the mechanical work. I have estimate from Daley. This is right here, in fact. This is the estimate from Dale Bailey. Now, I haven't had a chance to go through this with Fontaine home yet, but they've broken down where they but they've broken down where they think all the costs and stuff are gonna be. You know, here's, here's where they think mechanically and electrical, so some of these things, I already think that, that we're gonna have to work on to go down a little bit. One of the things we're looking at maybe doing with the window money, in lieu of doing windows, is doing some exterior doors, replacing the exterior doors, and we do feel that we can get that and stuff in there with Esser monies. Uh, and Mr. Butcher, uh, wanted to also, I think, look at interior doors too, we're gonna have to kind of play it out a little bit and see what we can do, but we are trying to look and see what we can do to get some doors and stuff in there to replace, instead we're not gonna do the windows. So you have an opportunity to do that.
And we can use that money because that, for, insulates the building.
That's right, that's the.
And we have a little league where you're after going to, because we got the cost grade, and it's, and with the cost grade, we can utilize some of that money, correct me if I'm wrong.
For security.
For the, everybody for the exterior doors, that's the cost grade for the most part.
That's kind of an update on where we are with Esser, so. I don't have an update for Ms. Salmon, I did go meet with her, she's, you know, I'm waiting to hear back from her. Uh, Mr. Butcher, that may be a conversation you and I will have with her, I think it's some of the workload and stuff she's trying to figure out, and she's, she's a single-person shop. You know, and to do the thing, so I told her, there's, you need to let me know if you can do it, or if you can't, we're okay, it, no one's gonna look bad on you. But I do have to move on with this, so, uh, I reached back out to her today and left her a message, so I'll, I'll be talking to her.
Just as soon as we waste, right?
Yes, she has, she has West, yes.
Okay. So we have dependently decided to do.
No, we're gonna get the numbers. Our biggest thing is to make sure we can get the, the HVAC taken care of, because that's gonna be your biggest ticket out, and then we'll look, you know, obviously with some windows and stuff, we're able to find on the Morgantown and McLaurin that we didn't have to do those, so we're saving some there, and then, then we're just looking at what we can do in the bathrooms more for, uh, hands-free stuff and things like that, that, that you can do. It's not gonna be like we're going to middle school, we tear those bathrooms apart and rebuild, we just don't have that kind of money in there for that.
And I think that we learned a few lessons from the middle school.
Right, we did, we did, sometimes if we just give, we just give the, the electronic stuff, the hand dryer, the, the, uh, the, uh, soap dispenser, maybe the lab or something, we can put your hands underneath or something like that, that, and that may be good, and it, and it should fulfill in what Esser's doing, because it's all touch-free. Any questions on Esser, I know kind of went over quite a few things, but that's an update, and I'll, I'll look forward to updating you again next month, it's a little, little further along, and hopefully we'll be a lot further along with Morgantown and McLaurin as well, so.
And I think that we would like to at least try to have the definite numbers, at least try to even remember, because learning, you know, who we learned from the project at the middle school, even if you order air, even if you excel B, in order after next, in January, you probably talk about, if you can get everything moved, but some of you are gonna be really doing good, is that right?
Yes, sir. I mean, it'd be complicated to get there, these air conditioning units right now are sometimes up to six months or longer to get in. So, uh, and right now, thinking about it, how many school boards are sitting out with Esser right now?
Wrong.
You know, plus, people are still building these projects, and there's a whole other sector of society that's not education, that is spending a lot of money as well, so there's a lot of money going out there. These are all things, they've been, mechanical, electrical, equipment and stuff, so I agree, Mr. Butcher, I want to get them on the street as quickly as possible. Any questions on Esser?
Mr. Butcher. Hello, can you?
Oh, yeah, hey, Mr. Byrd.
Hey, um, I'm sorry, I just wanted to give you an update on. I hope it'll come, I hope you don't hear me on that.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to give you an update on the Esser reimbursement, so we have been, we have received reimbursement through July. So all buildings, for, we have been reimbursed for, and it's what we're doing on spend.
That's excellent, thank you, Mr. Byrd. I already knew that, but I wanted Mr. Byrd to give you some good context, but that is very, very good news, so it, it's been good, Mr. West, you were asking about that. Everything that we have submitted so far, they have, they have done. Now, we are giving Ms. Thomas as much backup as we can, that's why we have a spreadsheet to break it up, that's why we're giving her as much as we can. Because at some point, you have, you, you have the, uh, the risk of being audited on this, there's a lot of money going out from the government. So I want to give you as much documentation as you can, because that audit won't come December of this year, that audit, audit will come December of 2026, you know? And by that time, if you don't have it written down and documented, it's gonna be tough, and Mr. Butcher by that point may, may be retired.
Yeah, well, we've asked him to do it back, we go down now, and set these plastic boxes up here, and let's keep the record as we go along, so if they come in to audit, they call it on the Sunday, say they didn't have an audit, it's a matter of pull those plastic containers out, and say, what do you need? And then that way you're gonna go back and do a whole lot of work, you do the work of money, which is easy to do, because it's just a matter of following what you got coming in at that particular time.
Well, I feel good though about what we're doing, using that money for HVAC, there's no way, that is what that money is.
Okay, uh, Mr. Butcher asked me to just show you some pictures, so I'm gonna kind of go through these, uh, over.
Go back to the screenshot.
Go back to the screenshot. Okay, so, overall in the high school, uh, you have four wings into it.
And where are you trying to get there, by keep where we are with the parking lot?
I'm sorry?
Have we given up any day we're gonna start on the parking lot, because right now, only 10 days past.
This weekend.
This weekend?
Yes, sir, so.
You know, if you're over in San Francisco.
I, I spoke with Bill Bray and Brasher, uh, a little, way before coming here, and I told them, our disappointment in the fact that, I mean, we've had nothing but beautiful weather. I mean, you can look at my shoes, full of dust today from walking the job today, so it's dry. The problem that he's, I'm telling you is that the site work guy had, is waiting on some piping that was supposed to be here three weeks ago, that hasn't come in yet, is supposed to be in next week. He's gonna get started this weekend by putting in some other smaller piping that he already has, that are roof frame piping, that go in these areas, all, you know, that cover these areas like that, that are kind of those, those, those little areas right between the two wings and stuff like that, there, and around the sidewalks. So he can get out from underneath the sidewalk areas, because, uh, Don Baron is looking at bringing our concrete guys next week to start rebuilding sidewalks throughout the building. And then, the, the, the boxes, I think he said he's gonna, they can start setting some of those boxes and then bring in the piping after. The piping, he's talking, is about that big orange concrete piping, like we put up front, there's gonna be around, around the sides of the building as well. That's as of this afternoon, talking, so. We will obviously stay on top of him for that, because.
I don't think you said, I don't think you said it about to me.
Sorry, sir.
I don't think you said it about to me.
I'm sure you will, I'm sure you will, it usually goes to my spam. On the weekend then. Okay, so this is the floor plan, let me slide. Okay. Drywall has been hung in this area here, this is the, uh, 10th grade wing, this is the first place they started. It is hung, it is finished, and it has a coat of paint on it, in this wing right here. They've already started in the bathrooms, and I'll show you some pictures of this real quick, and I'm gonna fly through the pictures that I'm explaining to you now. There's tile that's already coming in some of these central bathrooms, so this wing is, is the wing that's farthest along right now. This is the ninth grade wing, it has drywall and it's been finished pretty much everywhere, I think they're starting in there now with paint, and with tile, and what have you, in this one right here. Uh, Mr. Butcher, last week, when I walked around on, I believe it was Wednesday, when we, when we had the, uh, the meeting with the contractor last week, they had drywall up in most of this, uh, area here, but they had none in these two, they were just starting back at this little corner right here. That's the 11th grade wing, they now have drywall all of these outside rooms, on both of these wings, the 12th and 11th grade wings, have drywall in them, not the center, they're working onto the center. Now, it's just drywall that's hung, it's not finished, and by finished, that's that, the white stuff that you put in, in between all the joints and stuff that you put it out, and then you put the paint on it. So, uh, they have, from what Bill Brasher's been telling me, they've been running 25, 26 men a day out there on their crew, so. I can say that in one week, they have done quite a bit of drywall work within these two wings right here, that was not there Wednesday, last week. So, which is good. Now, this area right back here, which is the locker area, right next to the gym, that part there, they have been working in there, they've got block fill in, on, on the block walls, because that's not really drywall back there, it's a bunch of block walls because of the moisture and just the way that they built that area. And they're starting, I believe they're starting in there with tile, is that right? Yeah. This part over here, they haven't done anything on yet, so that, on one half of the gym, they have, on, on this half over here, they haven't done anything as of yet, so, again, I'll show you some pictures. All of this area here for administration, I think has drywall in it now, and has been finished, or is in the process of being finished. Uh, all of this has been framed, and all of this area here has been framed, which is your media center, your library, uh, and your, and your cafeteria area as well, the hood for the kitchen area already in place, no kitchen equipment yet, that's not coming into later, nor do you want it there right now. So, uh.
Freezer has been set. Freezer has been set.
Has been set, okay, so that's good, a walk-in freezer has been set, because I had a problem, I had another job that didn't come in on time. So that's a good, that's good, I did not go that deep into the state to look at that. So, what we have, what the contractor has to do, you see all these sidewalks around, this is what they're gonna get started on next week, Mr. Butcher, here. And then I, all of this area here that's in between the buildings, that all gets concrete, here as well. This pad right here, this will be concrete, but if you go out there now, it's just dirt, so that'll be concrete, you'll have concrete in these areas here as well, so. It's, it's important to get, that, that's why the sidewalk concrete crew is important, because they got a lot to do outside, not to mention that it also helps to keep, you know, keep the building there a little cleaner, instead of trucking mud in all the time. Especially when we're starting to do, you know, we were starting to have paint and stuff on the walls, you don't want mud coming off your shoes and stuff getting everywhere, so.
Where's the parking unit?
You have them over here, uh, let me show you. You got parking here, here on the front of the school, this, this is your ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th and 12th, same, same view. So you have parking here, this is your bus route, that goes all the way around, there'll be a drop-off area here, and a drop-off area over here.
And there's some in the back.
Yeah, and some back here in the back too, so, right there. So when you have basketball games back here, you have some more parking back here as well, so. And you still have a bunch of parking over here. Because what you don't have in the middle school is you don't have, you know, I think we talked about that a long time ago, you don't have drivers in the middle school, but you have them in the high school, so you, you know, you could park some in that, in that lot that's across, across the drive and have them walk through. I think we're giving them a sidewalk right here that they can walk, walk across onto the campus.
Do you know where the capacity is? Do you remember, I don't remember.
Shoot, that's.
I think it was 2:25, we cut it, we cut it back, so.
Oh, you're talking about for parking?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was around 2:25, I think, I thought you were talking to students.
No.
Okay. Okay. And then, on the. Show you the middle school overall pictures, you get a feel for where we are on that one as well, and then I'll get you the pictures, so I can get out of your hair here.
The middle school, Matt DeDeyke?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You put out there, uh, October 30?
Yes, sir.
We did discuss that. So, uh, these are your pods, I know this is a little small, but in order to kind of, I'll do, make it just a little bit bigger. Okay. So, these, this is Pod E, this is Pod D, those are the two, the furthest behind as far as work is going on into them. Mr. Butcher, these right here, the glass wi, the windows stay, they come in, they put a, a film on it to, to darken, stain them, darken them, uh, on these two. I, I honestly thought they got panels, and I was, we were asking the guy, hey, why would you put a panel on them, he said, no, they just get that, that stain on them, so.
They don't get that aluminum, aluminum pretty.
Yes.
For the.
Yeah, and, yeah, they're kind of, just a center window around. So, that's what's happening with both of these, neither of these have air conditioning units in them yet. Uh, we did discuss that, uh, all the units from what we were told at today's meeting are in. And, uh, Metro said, yeah, he's gonna get some guys out here, his lead guy was out this week, and he's gonna have guys here next week to put them in those two wings, and H and I. H and I, they're probably about 50% and 60% done on installing the HVAC unit, so they gotta get, get that finished, and they've got none in those two. So the thing that we have been talking to them, or Keith mentioned to them today in the meeting, is on H and I, all they really, they gotta put the air conditioning units on, and they gotta go touch up paint and stuff, there's no reason why in about three weeks or so, they should not be done with those, those two. And then, you know, those other two, the D and the E, while they are way behind, I mean, once they put the air, the air conditioning really drives a lot of it, because, you know, have they put the lights in those? So they got the lights in all right, so the rest of it is patching from flooring, you know, they've already got the cutouts in between the classrooms, they just gotta get the painting and stuff done, so, that's what we were telling them, so no reason why we shouldn't by the end of October have all four of those pods turned over to the owner. Which would leave you then, the guidance one, which is the long one with the bathrooms, and, uh, which will leave that in the library, in the library, Keith was trying to push that, say we can't get in there, but the administration is using the library right now, because we are, that's in Pod H that we're working on, so until we give them, turn that back over, they can't get out of there, so they were like cautioning us, they, you know, we're using the library for everything right now. So, I don't think the library's gonna be too bad if we finish up that all kind of last, we gotta get these pods turned over for administration and for student purposes.
And administrative, all the air is in, right?
Sorry?
And administrative, all the air and, and light are in, right?
Are they in, in that one?
In the.
Pod H?
Uh, no.
The administrative wing here.
No, there, Pod I has all four units set in place in the, in the, in the dumper. Pod H has the administrative building, just has one unit set in the classroom, so the other three units, two in the administrative side of the A, and one of the classroom units. The units are sitting on the floor, but they haven't been installed in the closets.
Because I thought they need administrative wings, we had schedule air in the, the, the dumper.
You got, well.
I think in offices, that's the.
I think it's fed, but it's fed from those closets. It's ducted from the closets.
That's this one right here that we're talking about. So, uh, the other two classrooms are the two science classrooms, which, they, they did all the work in this one pod, except for those two class, those two science labs. Uh, we, we had a very nice discussion about those two today, because I, I told them that for the last four weeks, I've seen very little, if any, work done in there. They did pour the concrete finally, they covered up the, the piping that was in the ground, they did do that. Uh, they have been working on some extensions on the piping in there that, that are, where the, where the cabinet casework's gonna go, the casework is all sitting in both rooms, just sitting there. So, there's no, I, I, I'm not seeing the reason why they can't have those two, those two finished here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, I, there is a little something I need to talk to you about that, on those real quick, so. Uh, so that's big picture, kind of where you are with, with, with the middle school. They are going to, they did discuss today, there is a bathroom back in the gym area that they've gotta renovate, uh, that they did talk about, I think that's gonna get started here, uh, soon. Um, and then the VOTEC, I think you've got that a little later on, on the agenda, is that right? That we are looking into the VOTEC now, but one thing with the VOTEC that we did find out today, Mr. Butcher, is we were talking about, hey, we probably gonna be pulling that out, and dividing that separately. I think they've already got a lot of the, the materials and equipment already ordered, are already coming in, so one thing we look at is, maybe we just get that, y'all give it to us, we, we store it, and then, you, you just need to get a labor contract to do it, so.
And let me say this, on those bathrooms in VOTEC, two bathrooms, and for the most part, uh, we went down from, we, we started off at what, 292,000 feet? About 292,000, let's go back and take another look, we went down to 198,000. The thing that upset me most, that I thought they wanted to change over the crew, they were going on to get started on the bathroom. What they wanna do right now is finish everything else, and give them what, 90 days on the main bathroom? There were 90 days on the main bathroom, and another 60 days on the, uh, bathroom where the, uh, the kettle guard is heated off. That's gonna push up, push up all the way into the springtime. So I feel like we could bid, get a cheaper price for the most part, and come back, and get somebody going, get started on it, get that out of the way, so, come November, we'll have all this construction stuff behind us, so we can move on, what, what do we need to do? Because we've been, we've been, we've been on this project now about 18 months. And the Lord be the earth for that time there.
You're gonna with Paul Jackson or with Bill?
Oh, yes. So that's the rest of the year behind, we have to know the agenda to, to bid out. So that's the rest of the year behind, we have to know the agenda to, to bid out and make somebody look at the tour here and do what they need to do, so we can go on. Because see, in the, in Fallow, Mr. Moakham knows this fence is coming up pretty soon. We gotta buy this past time, simply because of the fact we told the lady, hey, we're gonna renovate these bathrooms. And we're not gonna be, right, that same voice, she come back here in moments, we need to have it done.
I, I don't, I don't wanna say that Paul Jackson hasn't been doing a good job, they have been, they've been doing work, and it's been a tough job when you're doing renovation work on an old building. It's just that some of the pricing, I think, has been coming in so high and kind of a little, what we feel is a little unreasonable. And I think part of that is maybe some of those contractors are trying to make up some of the money they may have lost throughout the way. And we, we're catching the brunt of it at the end, so I think Mr. Butcher's idea is good, cut that one off, maybe we'll get somebody in there cheaper, we'll have a little gusto and enthusiasm.
That's our other poison.
And our local contractors can do smaller jobs. Local contractors, they can't do these big jobs, but they can do smaller jobs, so we, we should have a good group that did on that.
Yes, ma'am. All right, let me run through these pictures real quick so I, so I can get out of here and help you proceed on the agenda. Uh, so this is the front of the school as it is this week. Uh, what you've got right now is you've got brick around these areas, see the dark areas, that's brick all through there. The yellow is what's fixing to have ephes. We had the color all finalized last week, the ephes is on order, should be here next week, and they're gonna start putting, start putting that on. They're already starting to put on some of the insulation boards.
Yeah. Synthetic plaster.
It's a synthetic plaster finishing system that you have outside.
So, I mean, I would, I would look at it and say, stucco?
Yeah, kind of like a stucco. They're, they're, they're different, but people call them interchangeable, they're the same.
But that's the term, the construction term is ephes, because it's made different.
It's an exterior insulated finishing system. It's EI MS.
Oh, that's, oh, that's an acronym.
How, how does that compare to brick?
Well, nothing compares to brick. But what you've got on, I mean, brick, but, brick is.
You've got some concrete in it.
You, you, you got buildings and that, just that still have the original brick on it. I mean, because brick is brick, I mean, it's hard. But brick is also expensive, so what you look at when you're looking at budgets and this stuff is, you get the lower parts, brick, the part that people will be hitting and stuff, and, you know, get the elements and stuff on it, and the rest of the stuff, you have it underneath us and you can have it as decorative. So it's not to say that ephes is cheap and, you know, you're gonna punch holes and stuff through it, it's just, I mean, you just can't really compare it to brick. I mean, brick is like this.
Well, I understand that.
Can, can this stuff be easily repaired if somebody does hit it, this stuff, it's like kind of a stucco?
Yeah, and then you just gotta patch it and then you just gotta try to.
Would it resist mildew and things like, that's one of the problems with stucco in this area.
Um, I'm not gonna tell you that it won't ever mildew. Uh, you know, they try to get it with the finishes.
Everything.
It's in the shade, well, so it just needs a little pressure washing also.
Okay.
And I mean, you get down here in the south with the humidity and everything you got, it's hard for me. I'm, I'm from Baton Rouge, you can't keep a building there a penny white for more than six months, so. Um, okay, so that's kind of what you've got, so you see a lot of areas that is gonna start getting ephes, uh, in, in, in the coming, it probably should be starting next, next week. This is a little closer view of the front entrance to the school, here's your main entry doors, got your, your column bases there. Uh, you can see the brick a little bit, so you've got three different bricks, you've got this brick here, then you got a, a little more decorative brick, and then you have this one here, looks more like stone. It's in different areas, it's accent stuff and things throughout the building. This is one of the sides of the building, one of the wings. You can see on this one, this is either the ninth or tenth grade wing, this is tenth grade exterior. This is the side of the building where the bus will come around and they drop off, and the kids can go in through these, through these doors here. You can see the storefront doors have already started to be, have already been installed there, so that's, that's good.
And the light that you see is actually the first step of putting the ephes on the building?
Yeah, right there.
So they started that yesterday.
Uh, this is the ninth, outside of the ninth grade wing, very similar, you can see the storefront, I mean, the storefront units right there for the doorways. This one is the back of the tenth grade wing, so you can see where the brick is coming in, they still got a little bit more to do. Uh, one thing, Mr. Butcher, they are currently working on the twelfth grade wing, kind of on the side of it with the brick. There's supposed to be some more masons coming next week to help increase the things so they can get out of the way. Don Baron, one thing we're talking about is you gotta get those brick guys out of the way so you get all your sidewalks in it, so.
So we did with him, Nicky?
Yes.
Okay.
They're, they're out there working today, but he said that he's gonna have additional proofs coming next week.
And those are actually Don Baron employees, so he does have a little more control over it than one of his subcontractors.
So Nick's been digging on the frame, new folks scene, and all folks here be there too.
That's what he's telling us.
That's what he's telling us, that's what's been planned.
He's gonna get out of the wood, he's been there.
Yes, sir.
How do you put this ephes on? Do you need, do you need a mason to do that?
There's ephes installers who put it on.
Ephes installers.
But they, that white insulation board you see that's glued on, and then they put two coats of synthetic plaster over that. So they literally trial it on.
Trial it on.
Yes, ma'am. So they, they put on what's called a scratch coat, similar to stucco, and then they put a finish coat over it.
I need to come out and watch that.
Finish coat is really just.
Start next week, just going out.
Okay.
Probably a lot of parties, the color definitely the following week.
Don't stay too long, they'll put you to work.
Mr. Butcher will.
Well, I'm retired.
Uh, this is the between area, so it's a little messy, but this is what's gonna, this is what I was showing you is gonna be concrete. So one of the things they're gonna be working on, starting, uh, uh, that the site guy's gonna be starting is, there is drainage, there's some drainage lines that go through here for, you know, for the rain hits that area so they can drain it all out. They're gonna start working on that, because that's a little different pipe than the pipe they haven't gotten in yet. You can see some of the mechanical units already set in the walls right here. That's what these little boxes are, along here. So I believe this is between the eleventh and the twelfth grade wing, so if you're standing in front of the building, it's these two wings on, on to your right. This is a look, so if you walk in the building, you get through this, the main entry foyer, and you get into this long corridor right in front of the cafeteria, this is the look that it has. Uh, I just like the picture because it has that weighty little, uh, element to it. You'll also notice on here too, that there are two different colored sheet rock. One is impact resistant, harder, the other one is just normal. So it's the difficult thing, if you don't, if you're not building with block walls, you wanna do it drywall, so maybe you might see some, a little bit cheaper pricing depending on where the economy, where the market is at that point, that's, that's the difference in the, in the drywall, so I think it goes up to eight feet. So basically, you know, I guess tall guys, Shaquille O'Neal can jump up there and punch a hole in the top, but most people are not gonna be able to do that, and it keeps it a little more impact resistant, so.
That's cafeteria there, right?
This is the cafeteria right here, so you see a centerpiece here that's gonna be, this is one of M three A's, things they like to put in there.
Signature design.
Signature design, this is how you know this is an M three A building, I have the front of the building. But, so this is the cafeteria, the kitchen area is back in this area right here. And this is where you'll be cert, you know, where the students will be sitting right here. And if you look past that, that's the tenth grade wing, if I'm not mistaken, it's going that way. So the twelfth grade and eleventh grade wings are behind us in this picture.
All of the wings lead to the cafeteria?
All roads lead to food. Just made that up. So this is, uh, these are the classrooms that you see on the eleventh grade wing, this is what they're looking at, so when they, like I, I was telling you all earlier, last week, eleventh and twelfth grade wings had none of this. And they, they have increased their crew size and they've been doing this, so obviously they still got some stuff they gotta do up at the top, this is just one here, but they, they, I was happy to see that they have done some progress. Uh, this is in the twelfth grade wing, very similar, they're kind of, they're doing them simultaneously, concurrently, so that's good. This is your gymnasium, what it looks like right now. Obviously, this is, you know, there's no wood floor or anything. All of these boxes, the majority of this stuff is flooring materials, that's just been sitting there stored, so they can put them out to places they gotta do, whether it's tile that goes in the bathrooms and the walls, or whether it's flooring and stuff like that, that's, that's where the majority of these things are here. Those things right there are your basketball goals. They came in and they have been installed, so you can see two of them pretty easily, I think the others may be elevated up.
He was wrapping up today.
So, so basketball goals have come in, so that's, that's a good thing. Uh, one of the things we're trying to work right now is with Energy is to get the transformer set out there, and, because we need that in order to get the power into the building to, in order to run air conditioning units. Energy's having a delay in getting a transformer in through parts and pieces, it's just a national problem, so. I've had Mr. Bird and Mr. Ford helping me out and contacting Energy, because y'all, y'all are the ones that have the account with them. Uh, the electric, I mean, Don Baron's, uh, general superintendent knows a guy over at Energy Heat Protocol, so we're trying to do anything we can. They expedite, but we don't have a transformer yet.
But now the last information I received, I think Keith used it in the meeting, they're supposed to be here at the end of the month, right?
That, they had kind of told us, and they told Mr. Ford that. So I, I emailed Mr. Ford and Mr. Bird to see if, you know, if we've had any update, and I'll get them to see if they can call and make sure we are still on that schedule. No one's gotten anything from Energy saying, I, we do want to have them that day, since that conversation happened, so. Uh, but we need to have that because when I, one good example of something we cannot do until we have air conditioning going in the building is putting in that wood floor in there, because what you gotta do in that process, you gotta bring the wood in, and it sits in that room for a period of a week to ten days, because you gotta acclimate it. And then you put it in, but I can't start any of that, I can't do wood millwork throughout the building, I can't put ceiling grid and ceiling tile throughout the building, so. It's a very, it's a very major part of the construction process, it's a big milestone, and we're waiting on the transformer. My understanding is that the mechanical and the electrical is already kind of in place in order to make that happen once it comes in. Uh, so we are waiting for that, so that's why I'm having that. Uh, here's an example, uh, one of the bathrooms in the tenth grade wing, you can see the tile's already starting to be put in there. This one is a tenth grade classroom, so tenth grade, if you remember, is one of those farthest along, already has paint on the walls. So most of your classrooms are kind of that whitish, grayish color, light gray, and you have an accent wall, sometimes they're darker, sometimes they're a little yellow, so. You have that kind of scattered, scattered around. This is a ninth grade classroom, they don't have paint in it yet, but you can see all the drywall finishing has been done, this is one of your units, air conditioning units there, so you can kind of see what it looks like. This is the kind, these are the, one of the classrooms that faces that you'd see if you looked at only that you'd be looking at at the front of the school. Okay, that's why the, the unit is inside, because that way you don't have, if you're looking at it from the outside, it's more of a flush finish with the outside wall. The others, they kind of stick out. So the other parts where you don't really see them from the front of the school, this part is outside the door. So there's a handful of those, and all those units I think are in now, the last of them were being set last week. That is the pictures on the high school. I'll run through the middle school real quick. Keith, thank you for labeling all these. This is a Pod D classroom, so Pod D and Pod E are the two that we said are farthest behind right now. Mr. Butcher, that's what the windows look like there, so they'll have some tinting in some of the corner ones, it'll look like that for an accented look. Uh, so we got some paint going on in there, you can see the LED lights have been installed. This corner right over here that you don't see is where the air conditioning unit goes, and we don't have those in yet, so, and that's what we've been pushing Metro that, hopefully in the next, this next week, they're gonna be getting in there with a little bit of crew and get all those units installed. That, that is a, this is, uh, Pod D, this is one of those areas where the air conditioning unit will go in that corner. If you go in here, then there'd be piped up to a condensing unit at the top, so if you walk out there, you see the new little units they have everywhere, those are the condensing units for each, each individual one. This is inside a Pod D classroom, just another classroom, basically what they look like. They, this is, this is some of those concrete extensions they have in the sidewalks, I look like today, they placed a lot of that concrete out in the back area, back by the, behind the auditorium, they have some of those areas that they, they did those.
That catches the water that comes off the roof, so they call it splash pads.
Yes, because the roof has an overhang that ends about here, so that water just isn't dripping down everywhere, it kind of hits on that instead. Doesn't tear up and put mud and tear up all your breaths. This is inside Pod H classroom, as you can see, I mean, they can put the air conditioning unit in there, they should be pretty, I mean, they've already got paint, they got the, the panels and stuff on there. Mr. Butcher, we did talk about, you know, why are so many of these panels still have all that, all that plastic covering over them? And that's because they're still doing some painting on the outside to them, and maybe on the inside, and they're protecting that panel color, that's what, because I was.
Now, I noticed a lot of those panels too that are already being installed, there's already paint. We got a little old strip about a half inch that goes all the way around, some of those strips are missing, so I guess when we do our walk-through, what I would really ask for us to do is, I would ask for us to do a pre-walk through a week before the real walk-through, okay?
Yes, sir.
So then we can actually talk about things, we have our, we have our list already put together, because you, when they come and do a walk-through, they go through kind of fast, and I don't like that.
I, I, I like it.
I just need to kind of look.
I would like it more than a weekend, we could actually, because I mean, the earlier we could start showing, we're looking at all of this.
Okay.
Fix it everywhere else.
All right.
That's a great, great area.
They can get, to, we can get together then.
Yes, sir. So this is Pod H, so it just kind of shows you the outside. Yes, this has, this is that plastic covering we're talking about, they got to peel that off to get you the color, but the HVAC unit is inside that box right there. This is what it's looking like along the outside. I, I was kind of questionable on what that was gonna look like when I was first going to design, it's actually turned out to be a nice little, nice little feature out there. This is a Pod I classroom, this is one of the ones too they're trying to finish up, they gotta finish the air conditioning unit in there, but they've been doing paint, you've got your lights and stuff, so. This is what we're looking at, if we can get the air conditioning put in there, there's no reason why in the next couple of weeks, we should have these ready and be able to turn those over.
Marco, if you open that, I didn't open that door before I took the picture, but that unit's set.
This unit's in there.
Yeah, there's a unit in behind that door, and the ductwork is.
So what Keith was saying earlier, this pod, the four air conditioning units are set in those, H, they haven't completed those. This is, uh, exterior Pod I, so you can kind of see, you know, the same look on the outside. And that's it. Any questions on either Esser or the construction project? I'm sorry I went a little long, Mr. Butcher, but I think you gave a lot of good.
Guys, I think you have, you have back.
Think this weird had just joined the board when I, in last time, and I, I spoke for almost two hours up here, so I thought y'all had had enough of me for a while.
Yeah. We're doing it.
I'm gonna come back on this.
You are.
Okay, do I need to do anything?
Next time, we're gonna do a special call. We appreciate it, though.
As, as always, we, we love and appreciate y'all, thank y'all so much.
That's good, thank you.
We're gonna move to item number seven, you're getting your stuff, you know, and. That's approval of August sixteen, twenty twenty-two, regular minutes, and we get approved.
I'm gonna sit me.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Dr. Prince, something by Mr. Weird, all these things, nine pairs five. Okay, is there anything in the consent hour that needs to be moved to action? If not, you move this.
I will show a little bit of the plan that I said.
It's been moved, seven hours favor, nine pairs five. Okay, then we have approval of action hour eight point one, Mr. Moak. Thank you.
We got number, number four, Richard McDonald Green. Uh, item eight point one is a request for approval, partnership with Mississippi Alliance for Arts for Teaching Artists. Artists, uh, Mr. Marco Francis, uh, each year he comes on and works with St. Fallon and the Christian Music Program. Actually, I've gone on a trip today around to see if Matt has taken pictures. This year, however, the price has increased normally, it's been one thousand, but of course, everything is going up in inflation and costs, so it's going up to two thousand dollars this year.
Yeah, and I think what happened, he lost one of his phones or something.
We did go up. So it's the recommendation to two hundred and that was approved this.
So we gotta pay the two thousand. We're gonna double this pay, I, I'll pay.
I move for a favorable of the partnership with Mississippi Alliance for Arts for Teaching Arts.
Well, I guess I'm second. Where it been moved, it's seven dollars favor, nine pairs five, we'll thank you, Mr. Moak.
Yes, sir.
Eight point two.
Eight point two, uh, we already have a partnership with, uh, Wimford Development. The state is going to allow, uh, three career coaches to be hired and come to work with, uh, Mr. Moore at Fallon there. What would happen, they will actually submit the applications to, to the State Department. They will forward the applications to us, and then we'll actually make the selection, so we hope that we're gonna have this in place, maybe by the next time we, we have a register board meeting.
When you say we're gonna, we're making selection, you're telling the board that we have to prove.
I would think so, well, Mr. Moore, I really have, Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore really makes the selection, so they're gonna be working directly with Mr. Moore for the most part.
But I understand that, I'm just saying, but the board would have to.
Right.
But I understand that, I'm just saying, but the board would have to approve, because the money's gonna come in our move.
Right, no, the only thing we're doing is supplying the students to work with in the, in the location.
The, the, the organization is called Accelerate Mississippi. They, what the people selected would actually be employees of Accelerate Mississippi. However, we want to be a part of the hiring process in selecting the career coaches that will be recommended to that organization.
Speed, they said, but I.
Accelerate Mississippi.
And is that part of Latoya, what, the brand, workforce development?
Tamara Williams is the person.
Oh, sorry, that's, Tamara, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get clarity, I just, I'm a little slow. So we will be part of it, but we will not, we'll be part of the selective process, okay?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yes.
So we would have to prove whoever, also prove whoever is employed, is that what that would be clear?
I don't know, we have to prove that, because they're not gonna be our employees. They're gonna be working in our schools.
So I'm not sure. My mind was confused, but that's okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll get clarity, we were all on the, on the, on the Zoom call with, uh, you know, with the lady out of, yeah.
Mercy be in next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Yes, sir.
So you make a note of that, please?
Yes, sir.
Just clarification on that, I just wanted to give that.
Okay, can we get approval on?
I believe that we approved the career pledge.
It's been, been motion in seven all in favor, nine pass five, eight point three. Mr. Bird. Work is coming. Mr. Bird.
He's on. He was, he was early. There he is.
Uh, uh, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendent, deputy superintendent. You have approved your item eight point three, and that is the approval of a working compensation insurance. It is due to expire September the 1st. And this is going to allow it to be used from October 1st. Whoever's in hobby has, have been, well, let me just pause first and see if I got Mr. Tate Hobby, he is online. If he is, I would definitely go to the board again, let's see. Can anybody tell?
I don't think he is, Mr. Bird.
Mr. Hobby, are you with us?
I don't think he's on.
Okay, so then I, I would just, um, um, basically, you know, we have the proposal that's attached to this. And it shows that if you look at the program summaries there, I'll do my best with this. All right, so bottom line is the premium is going to increase about twenty-two thousand this year. And if you look at the program summary page, you'll see why. There have been increased claims over the last four years. And so that, that caused, that, that caused the increase in the rather premium this year. But if you just look at the history on that same page, from 2017 to 2022, our premiums have always been decreased because of how we manage things to the best of our abilities. Now, Mr. Hobby, I said that's the thing we can do to get the premiums to go back to the other way and decrease. And that would be having, having means with the principles. And each location will go over like best practices and things to try to get everybody on board to, um, to do those things that are gonna help reduce the risk of accidents happening. And so I, and I have the plan on working with him should y'all adopt this. Uh, approving this renewal, definitely I want to, you know, work with all our administrators to try to help get their premiums going in the right direction. But this is the first time in a long time, as you can see, that we've had in the caliber of law, in, in the premium.
And it's because we had claims or overall people have claimed?
We have had claims. We've had a few people who were hurt on the job, totally. Uh, we've had two or three people, probably with all the claims on top of my list, and six people total. But I think also, Mr. Bird, let's go ahead and get a couple of dates, uh, so Mr. Hobby can come in and work with our administrators. And go and get that on the calendar, please.
Yes, sir.
So.
Yes, sir.
We move it seven all in favor, nine pass five, we will. All right, Mr. Bird, and also I think.
The next item on the agenda is eight point three. That's the approval of the claim pocket, and it's separate from the financial documents. You know, that's a pretty big package there that may cost a fine read tonight, tonight. But, um, I would like to power five and see if anyone have any questions from the review, from the reports on the claim pockets.
No. Okay, can we get approved?
I believe that we approved the claim pocket, sir.
They've been moved in seven all in favor. All right, I think what I was saying about the insurance, Mr. Wes, Mr. Wes brought up a long time ago. He said, most of the time when we get to prove this, we got like a week or two to prove it, but we never have time to go and look and see if we wanna get any other type of insurance. And I think he was saying that you might need to give us time, and y'all need to get ready for that. You gotta know, we need to know something like three months out or two months out, so it's key, we wanna do something else, not right now.
Of course, what Hobby, uh, definition, though, is we prices it, I mean, he, he's looking for the better prize, correct, Mr. Butcher?
Supposed to be.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
And we're, we're taking, we'll have to take his word for it unless we have more time to investigate some, to certain extent ourselves.
So, uh, but we're gonna see.
Yeah. You know, these insurance have gotten so big now that, that it can get the same, I mean, I mean, I know from my own research, from my own.
Right, and so therefore, that's what I'm saying, if you got a cousin selling. If I ain't got to pay for it, my cousin tells me it's on, I'm gonna go with my cousin. I don't bother with it. You're a thing.
Yeah, I understand.
Uh, another.
You're talking of, of like the insurance or?
If one person come in and tell you, look, this is what I found.
Uh-huh.
You understand what I'm saying? I wanna see the three proof.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I mean, you wanna come name and Jamie, ask me, I'm, you know? I'm gonna tell you who I think is good, might be twenty-three thousand, I think you got to pay it, I ain't got to pay it.
Yeah, okay.
Right, my cousin. Okay, well, brother-in-law.
Look, before we, before we do that, uh, uh, Laquita.
Sir.
That motion was made by, believed by Dr. Bunce to accept that.
The claim, the claim document, the financial document.
Or, it's also all of the financial documents, I don't think she said that, but they had that.
All of it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Eight point five. Mr. Bird, did that, Mr. Bird?
I, I'll take that one, Mr. Bird. Anyway, eight point five, we want to advertise for, uh, the BIS to do the renovation, worked on the two bathrooms over at, at Fallon. And, uh, we wanna just follow the regular BIS law, I think the advertising, whatever, number of days, and get it in, take a look at it, and get back with, uh, refer to, uh, Keith and Marco to see if all of the specs in there that we need. And perhaps accept the BIS and make the war, uh, wobbly for the next meeting. So somewhere along the line, we'd have to have a special meeting.
Right, we've already got the space for it, I believe.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I saw it.
It's been moved in seven all in favor, nine pass five, eight point six. That's your, uh, that's your latest, seven eight, you have to do it. We give it back to you, right? And then you gonna go pile it up, how we do that? I did mine.
Y'all have to discuss it as a whole, we come up with one six, just a link to you, Miss Beattie.
We ain't got time to so.
You can do the next one, you can do, it's due after.
Okay, all right, we're beginning back there. Okay, okay, uh, we got this, we don't have to, we don't have to make no action on that. We got that just action.
I had to show up.
Nine point one, there it is.
Nine point one, uh, Mr. James members of board, this thirty-day review of board policies are on your cover sheets. In our lines, the requests and reviews are to policy C E E, policy C E A, policy D G, D J C, policy E D A A, policy G B A, and policy G A B B A, which deals with social media websites, uh, which has been a discussion, uh, in the past. Uh, the second page outlines what edits were made and the reasons for the edits. So those policies are for thirty-day review. They will be posted on the district website for public comment. And if we have any, we will bring those to your attention.
Mr. McMillan, for information purposes, what will those, uh, who will those policies cover on social media?
Social media, uh, the social media website, uh, uh, policy will cover employees. And there is some language regarding recommendations for students. But that policy, uh, outlines that one, uh, that employees shall not be freening students and while they are actual students in that staff school district. Employees will not post on their personal social media pages, uh, students of the next staff school district. Mr. Fields and his team do a very good job of capturing images, uh, throughout the district and at events of the district. So if they are meant to be posted, they will be posted via the district's social media page. And then they can be shared by employees on, by, via their personal pages.
But I think that's a policy that's long overdue because of the fact that, uh, you know, we have employees who post up on Facebook because they don't put their name, it don't feel like we can hold them responsible, so I think this is a very good policy. So we ask you to take a look at the policy and re, and review it. If there are any adjustments that need to be made before the thirty-day review is up, please let us know.
I have, was, uh, in addressing employees' arguments with each other. You know how employees go back and forth with each other?
Okay.
Is something in that, in that policy regarding it?
The only thing that we have here is that employees should avoid complaining about their job online, but it does not, um.
Or in conflict?
It does not address personal communications between employees.
But she's.
If it doesn't have anything to do with, uh.
If it's dealing with the school, that's what I'm saying. And they may be in disagreement with something regarding the school district. Should they be, uh, in conflict and back and forth, um, socially?
Now, Dr. Rob, let us take a look at that.
Okay.
And if there are any adjustments, we may, we'll send that to you, uh, prior to the thirty-day review.
Okay.
All right. Nine point two, Ms. Beer.
Ms. Beer?
She's down.
Okay, she got a little. Okay, nine point three, third program. But she off now.
No, she's off.
Ms. Tom.
Is that him now?
Yes, we can hear him.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. James members of the board. Before you have the Esser report for last month, are there any questions?
Uh, I'm looking at Elsa one, right? So we still have some funds in there, right?
Yes, sir, we do, we have, um, obligations that should cover most of it.
So when do it, all of this? All the, all the.
We have to operate it by the end of September and draw down, they've now changed the, uh, date to the drawdown to December of twenty-three. But we still have to operate it by the end of this month.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
December twenty-three. So you've extended the time to go all year.
You can request it up to December twenty-three, but you have to operate it by, so you have to have a hundred or twenty bucks by the end of the month.
Okay, so let me ask you something, uh, you know, we had a discussion a while back about asking if you had, uh, asking you to take some time to see what other districts are doing, and it relates to Esser.
Yes, sir, we're doing, we're just about finding rhythm.
So they're not going beyond the scope of the kinds of things that we're doing as far as utilizing the fund?
No, but not what we saw.
Uh, could you tell me what districts, uh, you may have checked with, or was it just the state problem?
No, we just, I checked, asked to check with different resources, um, Mr. Mike, I hit me out with this one that I was looking at. I know we looked at one, Coach, we looked at J T N.
I don't think.
I looked at three or four, you think, I don't know, which, you want to go, we looked at the next?
I believe we looked at, uh, the Soto.
Yeah, the Soto.
So we looked at some larger students?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's what I had.
I think we will, we will, uh, we will, uh, and Mr. Bird, one chance, we can all, get all the questions for us to get some. Okay, so we can do that one day. Okay, thank you, Ms. Tom.
Thank you.
Nine point four is our board calendar, anything need to be taken off, I had to give this. They were, to contend up, they, we did that.
Yeah, I did all of that, I got one thing, I'm going in too close during that.
Yes.
Yeah, one thing, I want to discuss the closing elimination.
Okay, two more, the sports and comments, Dr. Robson.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I just would like to say that COVID-19 is not gone. I have two coworkers out right now with COVID, so please, please stay safe.
Okay, Mr. Tom, do that.
Are you going to address the response, Mr. James?
Response, yeah, we gonna do that.
You gonna do that, you gonna read it, or whatever case we need?
To my, to the paper.
Yeah.
I thought we, we were gonna make sure.
Well, I thought you were gonna read that pound copy here.
Yeah, you gonna read it up?
No, you need to read.
And I ain't even seen it.
At, at some point, I'm just saying, when it gets to you, somebody from the board needs, needs to share. Because it needs to be a part of the record on video and a part of the record for the newspaper. And a part of, put it out in our minutes.
Okay. You said it, you said it, boy, you said it.
All right.
Hello, people.
Yes.
So you have to, you want to read it?
Yeah.
The Board of Trustees would like to address some inaccurate or incomplete information regarding employees and budget requests that have been made in public forums. In a recent comments made by a county supervisor published in the Natchez Democrat, a county supervisor stated that the district employs over seven hundred employees despite guidance from external auditors to decrease the number of employees. Natchez Adams School District currently has five hundred and fifty-four employees, both full and part-time on its payroll. Four hundred and forty-two employees are paid from district maintenance funds, which come from the state and county funds. One hundred and fifteen of the four hundred and forty-two employees are paid through federal or state funds for federal programs, child nutrition, and special education. That number included six employees at A C C S and Cathedral paid through federal programs. For the two hundred and twenty to two hundred and twenty-one school year, there were only five hundred and seventy-nine employees on district payroll, a four percent decrease. An additional statement was made that per pupil expenditures for our district were approximately sixteen thousand per student per year, quote, from county taxpayers' funds, end quote. For twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the Mississippi Department of Education calculated the per, per pupil expenditure for Natchez Adams School District at thirteen thousand, one, uh, eighteen forty-eight cents, which includes expenses for students in Natchez Adams School District and special populations of students at A C C S and Cathedral. This per pupil expenditure slightly increased due to the increased expenditures in response to the pandemic and higher per pupil expenditures required for approximately five hundred students served by special education. In twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, prior to the pandemic, the per pupil expenditure was eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. The board, working in conjunction with district leadership, continues to monitor school enrollment and adjust the number of personnel employed in the district without sacrificing the quality of services provided to our students provided to our students or negatively impacting student performance. We work to ensure that our students have access to the professional staff they need to meet their academic and behavior needs. The board has taken a number of proactive measures to ensure that all classrooms are staffed by highly qualified teachers. The recent consolidation of our two middle schools into one middle school and the consolidation of Natchez Freshman Academy and Natchez High School into one high school has resulted in every classroom being staffed by certified teachers and a decrease in the number of teacher vacancies, teacher vacancies. The Adams County Board of Supervisors published an advertisement of the county's annual budget that stated, quote, "The increase of tax levy of one point nine three mils is necessary only because of the increased funding request of the Natchez Adams School District, which by law, Adams County must fund," end quote. In twenty twenty-one, the Natchez Adams School District annual tax request was fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. I'm sorry, fourteen million. I'm not used to using that. The twenty twenty-three tax levy request is fourteen million, two hundred and forty-six, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. The tax levy request amount for twenty twenty-two was thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty-five, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. This decrease request was due to an accounting error by the county on mobile, mobile home properties. The tax levy request formula is based on the amount of ad valorem taxes collected the previous year from October through March. Because of the county's error of approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars, the ad valorem taxes collected were decreased. Therefore, the district request was thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty-five, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Legally, the district could have made a request for up to an additional seven percent in funding. However, there was no additional funding request made by the Board of Trustees. So if we would look at the last three years without any distortions in the taxes due to county error, the tax levies would have been very comparable. The state funding formula allows school districts to legally request up to a seven percent annual increase. For the Natchez Adams School District, that seven percent equates to an additional tax request of approximately two point eight million dollars over the last three years. However, over the course of the last three years, the district has not requested the additional increase allowed by state law. The three mil request to fund the renovations for Natchez Middle School has been included in the levy request for all three years. Therefore, the district has been able to cut operating costs and pay for the construction of the new Natchez High School without an additional tax request from the county. The Natchez Adams School District Board of Trustees does not establish village rates. The village rate is set, set by the Adams County Board of Supervisors. The Natchez Adams School District Board of Trustees remains committed to being good financial stewards for the students served through Adams County. The board has been diligent in working within the tight financial constraints caused by the pandemic and the national inflation that has affected everyone's budget, personal budgets, county, and city government, and businesses. We welcome the opportunity to speak with any concerned citizens or our city, county government partners regarding the financial health of the district, factual dist, district data, or demographics, and the strategic plans that we have for the growth and progress of Natchez Adams School District.
And I'd like to offer motion that we would, uh, make that position from the board a part of the record and make it a part of our meetings and so forth and so on.
Okay. All right, and, and move since I'm all in favor? Pass five, eight, nine, thank you.
Did it, I missed, couldn't get it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Miss Beard?
Good evening.
There it is.
President James, Member of the Board, Mr. Wood, Richard McDonald Green, who we have before you is the thirty day review for our, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school, we own this policy, and this policy just, pretty much, this policy we, um, get approved for every year. So, if you have any questions?
No, we don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Have any comments this way?
I don't.
I don't have any. So then, this time, we can go to more determination?
I so move.
Moving second, going to close determination, determine what we need, have any need, then dig a session, all in favor? All right, pass five, eight, nine, close the determination.
So who we want to, and, and to begin the session to discuss personally? Do you have any?
We have it.
The long transfer in personnel, maybe?
The reason I don't. You don't have any, neither?
We don't.
We don't.
You don't have any, neither?
He's a total.
Okay.
Well, Peter has any?
He didn't have that.
I think, what did I say?
Personally, you're trying to. Okay. All, uh, motion is made by Mr. Wood, since I'm all in. Dr. Robson? Wood? Okay, all in favor? Reading, Dick, you said, thank you.